of Education for June 7, 2021. It is 7:05. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick D'Ambrazio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here at Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Adam Mosz up here. Trustee Mary Petishkov.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
President James Thorpe.
Here. Next item?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Susan Stanley, Principal of Salina Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Dearborn Board of Education members and our Dearborn family. I am Mrs. Susan Stanley, and I am the proud leader of Salina Elementary School. We have our students here who are so honored to lead us in the pledge.
Hi, my name is Jana Shahab, and I'm in first grade.
Hi, I'm Hamad Jeradat, and I'm in second grade.
Hi, my name is Sadeen, Sadeen Jeradat, and I'm in second grade.
Hi, my name is Insaaf Abdurrahman. I'm in first grade.
Hi, my name is Abrar Abdullah, and I'm in third grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the citizens, one nation on the path, inclusive, with liberty and justice for all.
I look forward when we can have the students back in person to do that, and it's good to start to see more faces be able to make it into the room. Next item, please.
Second item is superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with our tradition. We've been doing this since the pandemic started. The good news is, though, that the COVID numbers are getting much better. We just saw positivity levels are very low right now, but at the same token, we want to, you know, recognize and remember those who have suffered as a result of COVID. Right now, the tally is 597, over 597,000 deaths in the United States and over 20,000 in Michigan. So we know that a lot of people have suffered. So we'll just take a moment to sign, please. Thank you. So I will move down my agenda items, and we have retirements this month. I want to both congratulate and thank our retirees. We have Wendy Corovo, 21 years of service; Jennifer Gagnon, over 26 years of service; Catherine Hall, over 18 years; Celeste Hume, 30 years of service; Colleen Kirchner, over 32 years of service; Cheryl Leonard, over 21 years of service; Catherine Strathjason, six, over 16 years of service; Veronica Williams Jacobus, 36 years of service; and Diane Yeros, 19, over 19 years of service. Congratulations and thank you to our retirees. I am going to now call up Masum Ali Bazey and Jane Mazza, the DFT President and our Executive Director of Staff and Student Services, to talk about a letter of agreement that was signed and negotiated, and it's a real positive, I think, for our district, for our teachers, and some good things coming out of this letter. So I'll let them go ahead.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Good evening, President Thorpe, school board members, Dr. Malenko. Yeah, I'm very pleased to announce that we came to agreement with administration on a letter of agreement. It moves all our new teachers and incoming teachers to a Level Six, or Step Six, rather, which will make us very competitive with every other district in the Wayne County area. It also gives a bonus to our veteran teachers of the 3% stipend for the 2021 year, 2021-22, and 22-23 year. So that's off schedule, so it's not on a step, but is a 3% bonus. We also have got two additional personal business days and some very much needed special ed language on class size and workload. So I'm very happy that we could come together and work out this agreement for our members. It's been just an interesting year, right? One for the history books. I must say, I'm extremely proud of all our members, all our staff, actually, all Dearborn employees, for the work that we've done this, this year. We've kept education going. We've kept food service going, and no matter what obstacle was thrown in our way, the teachers and the custodians and engineers and bus drivers and secretaries and parapros, hope I didn't forget anybody, have tried their hardest to make sure that our kids were served to the very fullest. So it really is a show of appreciation to our staff, my staff, the DFT, but all of us, and I really want to thank you. And I really want to thank the board and Dr. Malenko for pushing so hard to get those vaccines for our staff back in February, March. That made, that just turned the page for me. That was just wonderful. So thank you very much.
Good evening. On behalf of the district and the negotiating team, Micah Salee, Executive Director, Amal Akadre, Director of HR, and Rob Cedarland, also Director of HR, this is a super exhilarating end to our absolutely most challenging year ever. It's with extreme excitement that we collaboratively reached this agreement to honor all of our DFT members. We are thankful that an increase in state and federal funding allowed us and gave us the opportunity to do so. To recognize, it gave us an opportunity to recognize our extremely talented staff, especially our special ed auxiliary staff and all of the staff, DFT members throughout the district, and I echo what Jane just said regarding the entire district and our appreciation for all that they do each and every day. It's essential to express that the negotiations, these negotiations and this agreement is truly representative of the feedback that we've received from our instructional staff. We see you, we hear you, and we are thankful to you for all you provide to our students, our district, our community each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why not?
Wonderful that we have such a good working relationship with all of our members.
And we have a settled contract for two more years, but this was something we reached out, we wanted to do to recognize our staff, and we're going to be sitting down with the other union groups now. We generally will meet with the DFT first, and once we settle, we'll be meeting with the other groups as well. All right, I'm going to continue to move on. Appreciate the support of the board as well and the leadership for allowing this to happen. Again, thank you, Jane, and DFT. All right, so COVID, I mentioned how the positivity rate is headed in the right direction. It's below 3%. You know, even though it wasn't the main metric we were using the last several months, we still were monitoring it, and it's going in a good direction. We are still required, per recommendations, remember, we don't have a lot, a lot of our students are not yet eligible for the vaccine. So the masks are going to be used for the rest of this year. We're done in a few weeks. We will start looking to phase in and following Health Department guidelines once, you know, the summer comes around, where we're going to phase in allowing masks to come off when you're outside only. Inside, in the rooms, you'd still, we would still have them in the buildings, and then we'll monitor things as we go into the fall. We're doing the same thing with graduation. I sent out communication. And again, one thing is the guidance keeps changing as well, but we've been pretty steady. We have not rushed to judgment. We want to maintain the safety. And so during graduation, all of our students are getting tested unless they had the vaccine. They can prove they had the vaccine. They will wear masks, but since we're going to be six-foot social distance on the field, the good thing about Dearborn is we're used to having our graduations outside, so we're ready to go with that. The only difference is we're going to have six feet away, and then when the students sit down, they could take their mask off because they'll be outside social distance. When they get back up in line to walk somewhere where they could be in a group, they will put the mask back on, and then they can take it off when they get their picture for recognition. And I think this is a good resolution that we came up with, where we're maintaining health and safety, and we're allowing some flexibility as we start to open up a little more. Vaccines, and I know Jane Mazza mentioned it, we also have been running multiple clinics for students. We've now had, we, you may recall, we initially bused students out to the DMC when it first opened up for 16-plus. We then also opened up a clinic at Etzel Ford. We had three days over there. Actually, it would have been four with the second dose, and that was through the Henry Ford Hospital. We, then, DMC came back to Salina, so we were out at Salina. And then recently, the Health Department, just last week, was out at Bryant. We have one more we're scheduling at William Ford. It's going to be on the 17th of June, and therefore, we would have had a clinic for students at almost every area of the city geographically. So we're excited about that, and we will encourage, you know, parents, staff, community members, people can come. You don't just have to be a student to get vaccinated. They're willing to do anyone, and that's how they're, they're running the clinics for anybody that would like to get the shot in the arm, and that's how we're going to get back to normal. So that will continue. I, the board is aware of this, and we have negotiated this with the DFT for a letter on school start times, and it's something we had surveyed parents long ago. The board, we've been talking about this. And so we will have an action item at the next board meeting for the board to approve. We're recommending, and we've negotiated with the DFT, and I give credit to Mark Andrews and Tom Wall's department, because a lot of times, the busing and transportation can be a difficult situation, and is for most districts. And I know I did send that memo, President Thorpe, that you wanted to cost, what it would cost if we only had two start times, and it is fairly costly, with, you know, having the ability to get bus drivers as well. So we're looking at 7:50 to 2:45 for high school, 8:25 to 3:20 for middle school, and then elementary would be 9 to 3:55. And it's really, for high school, it's a switch of about 30 minutes, and then for elementary, it's a change of 20 minutes. It's not a huge change. And I think it makes sense. It moves us so that high school students are not getting up and starting at 7:15. So again, that'll be on for action.
And the K-8 buildings are all going to be
Yes.
coming and going at the same time, not a staggered schedule. Is that correct still?
Yes, they will be, I believe they, they follow the middle school.
The middle school, yeah.
Thank you for asking that. Okay, so that is a positive as well. We also, the enrollment, we have publicized the virtual school all over. It's gone everywhere. Tomorrow is the deadline to sign up for the virtual school, the 100% virtual online for parents that are interested. And, you know, some people ask, well, why do we, we need to know now? It's because if we don't know now, we won't have teachers in classrooms. We have to plan. Usually, we actually, when students enroll in secondary, they, they're already filling out their class sheets, and principals have to plan for that. So that's why we need to know how many want in there. And so right now, I believe we're just a little bit over 200 students, but I think it's growing. And so we'll continue to, we promoted it. I mean, I'm promoting in-person instruction, but I've said it here. We also know that parents, you know, it's a parent decision as to how they, what they want to provide for their children. If they feel safer in online, then, and for some students, online may work well for them.
I just had the conversation with the neighbor as I was leaving my house today, and they're waiting till tomorrow to make that final. I said, well, we gotta make this decision. So it, it's a, it's a tough call, but it's an option.
And our summer school, this is going to be our largest, we're actually over 6,000 now enrolled when you include the secondary in the summer school program. This is going to be a huge program, and it's going to have a positive impact for our students. So that federal money, we're putting to good use, some of the one-time money to support. We know our students need it. So, and I know some of the trustees you have mentioned that you got good feedback from the community as well, I know. So, and I want to announce that this, for the next board meeting, you'll have as an action item, it's our State Association for Athletics. Every year, you have to approve that. So that'll be on the next board agenda on the 21st. That's how we usually do it, and I announced it. I have one other thing. There is a very nice adult and community education brochure that I believe all the trustees received, and they did a very nice job as our adult ed for registration, and so they have a nice pamphlet here. And they do a great job, and I know some of us were, were over at the graduation last week at adult ed, and we had the early college. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Malenko on any of his items? Trustee Berry.
I don't have questions. Just want to go back to the first one, letter of agreement. Dr. Malenko, I want to thank you for your leadership. You made this possible. You were listening to this board. We appreciate all of our employees. In the last couple of years, we've been telling you that we appreciate our teachers. And boy, did they step up big time for, for our district last year. So even though the contract doesn't expire for another two years, the fact that you had the vision, and you and your team, and thank you, President Mazza, to do this. So I mean, this is a big appreciation for teachers, and then what I've been hearing is very, very, it was received very, very well positively. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Watts.
So I have a question about the summer school. Do we have the percentage, I know that you said 6,000 students. Do we know what percentage, elementary versus secondary?
The majority, I believe it's 5,000, over 5,000, or K to eight, K to eight.
Okay.
So I have that. It's like 5,300, I believe, approximately. Is that roughness? Yeah.
Okay. And then just the other thing. I know you had mentioned the vaccinations. I just wanted to share that access tomorrow, we'll be doing vaccinations from 2 to 6, and they're going to be giving out $25 gift cards to everyone who gets vaccinated in our community. And also, they're doing a bike raffle, I think, other raffles as well. And I know community members were asking where else they could get vaccinated, and I believe now that the Performing Arts Center is closed, they can get vaccinated at any of the fire stations. I believe they can also walk in. They don't need an appointment. So just additional information out there. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Trustee Mosz.
I'd like to also echo Trustee Berry's comments as far as the agreement, and especially that there is some language now for the special ads and capping those hours for them and rewarding them if they go over. I think that's much needed and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would just make a couple of quick comments, echoing some things they already said with the, the letter of agreement with the DFT. The board is very happy to offer additional personal days to the employees. This has been a very tough year, and we'd always wanted to make sure that we're doing what we could to support the mental, emotional health of all, and also to do what we could to try to reduce the learning loss from this. So the numbers that we're hearing for the summer school program are great. I talked to a teacher from outside the district. He said it's amazing what we're able to offer financially to our teachers compared to some of the other districts around. So a lot of things seem to be going in the right direction. You have been listening to what the board has, has said the priorities are for this year, and we appreciate it. Any additional comments before we move on? Next item, please.
Next item is recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
And we have Ms. Peterson.
She fell asleep.
Being back in person is going to take some getting used to.
Disoriented.
I was looking around the room to see who was there for my next presentation.
Good evening. Commodations. Commodations go to Thomas Hand, John Tobin, Gordon Skennell, and all of the Etzel Ford support staff that graciously worked with the Adult Education Department to accommodate the last-minute change of the outdoor graduation to an indoor event. Mr. Hand handled all the nuances with professionalism, calmness, and made sure that all necessary accommodations were made. The staff at Etzel greeted the adult ed department with kindness, smiles, and a willingness to help. Commodations to our grounds department for their work at Snow Elementary, assisting with the grass cutting and bush trimming. High school commendations. Commodations to the valedictorians and salutatorians from our high schools. Graduations run from last Saturday through this Saturday, weather permitting. Cross your fingers. Dearborn High valedictorian, Selena Bazey. Salutatorian, Grace Betker. Etzel Ford valedictorian, White, Wayton Vicki Wan, and salutatorian Scarlett De Vries. Fortson High valedictorian, Amal Tahir. Salutatorian, Rita Mauza. Henry Ford Early College valedictorian, Yasmeen Barry. Salutatorian, Ali Farhood. Henry Ford Early College Advanced Manufacturing valedictorian, Almar Daie, Rena Almar Daie, and salutatorian, Xena Algazi. Accommodation to the students at Dearborn High who work on the Pioneer Press. The students receive four awards in the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association's Annual Spring Awards Contest. Students receiving awards include Reem Cassir, Jad Aoun, Yik, and Yakin Bazey. The Pioneer Press is the monthly student newspaper produced by teacher Mike Schmidt's fourth-hour journalism class. Commodations to the Etzel Ford female athletes who performed well at regionals and advanced to the state track meet. Brianna Bates was the regional champion in the 100 and 200 meter. Bates is a two-time regional champ in the 100 and 200. She is also committed to run track at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor next year. Reem Domily was regional champion in the 400 meter and runner-up in the 200. Kyla Lockhart was runner-up in the 100-meter hurdles. The four-person 200 relay team finished first. The team of Brianna Bates, Lydia Morano, Reem Domily, and Kyla Lockhart won the event with a time of 1:46. 1, is it 1:46.64? Accommodations to the Dearborn High's girls varsity soccer team who won an MHSAA district championship on Thursday with a 4-3 win over Gross Point North. Yay, pioneers. The pioneers advance to the regional round of play on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. The team is coached by Nina Strutz. Middle school commendations to the school administrators who helped with our recent vaccination clinics. First commendations to Andy Dennison and his team at Bryant for assisting with a walk-in clinic held by the Wayne County Health Department. Next, commendations to Iman Ahmed at Salina Intermediate who assisted in organizing the Detroit Medical Center Clinic at the school. Ms. Ahmed also went out of her way to reach out to the local community, including contacting neighborhood groups and a local mosque to invite nearby residents to attend. When some questions, when some questioned the vaccines, she spoke with them personally and encouraged them to come to the clinic so they could get their questions answered by the experts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Roll call.
Good evening. A donation of $1,930 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for coding and multimedia improvement projects. A donation of $725 has been offered to DC MST by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for DC MST Coder 7 Virtual Robotics Competition League. A donation of $500 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for fifth-grade science projects and promotion. A donation of $15,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with Cleveland Cliffs to be used for outdoor classrooms at Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate School. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Mr. October Foundation for Kids to be used for the STEM after-school program. A donation of learning-to-read resources, guided reading books, and national geographic readers have been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Donors Choose to be used in Garam Ahmed's classroom. A donation of 80,000 reusable child-sized face coverings has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Wayne Risa to be used at every elementary school. A grant of $45,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate by Children and Nature Network to be used for technical assistance for the Green School Yards project. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary by Access to be used to purchase classroom supplies. A donation of $2,736 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Wayne Risa to be used to purchase books for classroom teachers. A donation of 151 science kits has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Wayne Risa to be used by classroom teachers.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee meeting, May 10, 2021, Board Report 20-105. Policy Committee meeting, May 10, 2021, Board Report 20-106. Superintendent Evaluation Committee closed, May 20, 2021, Board Report 20-107. Regular P-12 meeting, May 10, 2021, Board Report 20-108. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
So the motion was made by Trustee Berry and supported by Trustee D'Ambrazio. Any corrections? All right, seeing and hearing of none. I believe we would need a roll call.
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrazio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosz, yes. Trustee Petishkov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item?
Special reports. Dearborn Public Schools slash the City of Dearborn Student and Community Safety Agreement. Dr. Glenn Malenko, Mr. Baba Atty, Mr. John Leacher, Chief Hadad, Mr. Tim Carrier.
Good evening again, everyone. So we have our full team here that will be giving this presentation, cooperation with the Dearborn Police Department, and we appreciate the great work with Chief Hadad and all the things that he does. We have our attorney here. We have our safety and security specialist, and our technology is here. And Dave, do I just hit, click the mouse?
Or the arrow.
Or the arrow, okay. So we always go back to our mission and our vision, students first, and this is why we're here today, to put students first. And within the strategic plan, we have the goal on school safety. School safety obviously is a huge priority. It's number-one priority in our district, and it's written into different portions of the strategic plan, and that's why we're here today. I can also mention that when we have technology and equipment available to make sure that our students are safe, we want to do that. For example, this isn't the point of this presentation today, but safety is, and you might recall, years ago, we brought in the AED machines. And what happened a couple of years ago, remember, we had, it was used, and the life of a child was saved in the McCullough Unit's pool, and we actually had some police officers and first responders here to recognize. So this is just another example of how we use, you know, technology to make sure our schools are safe. And I'm going to turn the next slide over to Mr. Leacher.
Thank you, Dr. Malenko. Good evening, President Thorpe, trustee members. So school safety has always been something that's been ongoing for as long as I can remember. We've done things in school like fire and tornado drills, duck-and-cover, stranger danger awareness, things like that with regards to natural disasters, things that, you know, we knew could possibly happen. In our wildest dreams, we never imagined something as horrible as Columbine could happen, but it did. In 1999, the face of security, safety and security in schools and public schools changed forever. We've now added active shooter training as a response to the need for heightened school security after Columbine. As you may recall, it took 47 minutes before entry to the school was made in 1999 because at that time, response by police was a tactical response, which required recalling in a special unit to address, address active shooters. That resulted in the shooters fatally injuring 12 students, a teacher, and wounding 23 others, and then they took their own lives. That took all of 13 minutes to take place. So we had to change the way we did business, and schools had to change the way they responded to these types of events. So that required a heightened need for, heightened need for school security. As a result of that, most police departments, most police departments now require all patrol officers to receive active shooter, commonly known as rapid response training, which enables them to make immediate entry, almost immediate entry, in an active shooter situation. So then, we're good to go for a while. We think we've got everything under control, and then we have another heightened need for security to go even one step further because of Sandy Hook and Parkland shootings, which brought an even higher level of focus on school security and safety. In Sandy Hook, it was difficult to identify where the shooter was. In Parkland, in the Parkland shooting, a significant delay in resolving that situation was due to first responders not knowing where the shooter was. So even with new policies for rapid response training, the inability to quickly identify the location of an active shooter results and equates to more lives lost. the location of an actor, active shooter results and equates to more lives lost.
So Mr. Leacher just mentioned Sandy Hook, Parkland, Columbine. Does anyone, Rigby Middle School, does that ring a bell? Anyone? During this year of COVID, we've obviously been focusing on safety in a different manner. But if you recall, just before the COVID pandemic hit, Parkland was on the minds of our students. We actually had students that were protested outside of all the high schools, student-led. So this is just recent. At May 6, 2021, we had two students in custodian, you know, just this last month. So these things, we hope that we never have to use the tools that are available. But what I can say to you is, as a superintendent, that's what keeps me up at night, is a potential active shooter situation. And I think it would be a nightmare for all, so we have to be prepared just in case. We never want to use it, but we practice and we prepare. Here's some other statistics and I won't read them all, but you can see, 231 school shootings since Columbine. We have people who have gotten injured. In 2018 alone, there were 35 mass school shootings. That's when the Parkland school shooting. And a lot of us might remember where we were. We were getting a presentation here from the advanced ed in the boardroom when that was going on because the advanced ed consultant was actually from that school district in Florida, if you, some of you might recall. So it did hit home closely to, for us. And there's a couple more, let's talk about in Michigan, you know, historically. And again, we want to be prepared. So we've had Bath, Michigan, University of Michigan Ann Arbor, Henry Ford College, some of you recall that, were on the board at the time. And Central Michigan University. So these things, you know, again, you really hope you never, ever have to use the tools you have, but you've got to be prepared because it could save the life of a child and that's why we're here today. I want to now turn it over to Chief Haddad and mention, this picture here was when we were in Washington in 2015 because of the community policing model. And if you, any of you go out to the schools or see any of those SRO officers, they befriend the students. They, they play football. They, they're part of the school culture. And I think that's the model that the chief has brought in and we presented in Washington. So chief, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Dr. Maleko, Mr. President, board. Every time I see one of these, it really is sobering for me and I've been a cop 48 years. I can tell you that where we stand today with the request and implementation of this technology is yet one more layer. But I remember back in 2012, I served on five or six federal task forces and I was privileged to a lot of intel. And I came back about three weeks before Sandy Hook. I changed the policy where every officer on the street has to stop at a school. Did I get any pushback from that? What, what do you think the answer is to that? I did. Three weeks later, we have Sandy Hook. To date, our officers visit the schools when in session between 600 and 800 times a month, depending on the month. So we've done our part to get the officers in the street, into the schools so they learn what the schools look like. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that I will use any excuse to get our officers to the schools, whether it's election day, prom night, basketball. I want our men and women to know how the schools are set up. I can tell you that we were also the very first school district in the country to have the Secret Service and ATF come in here and train our high school principals sometime in 2014. Under President Obama's "It's Time to Take Action," they were the first in this school district to come. Dearborn is never disappointed when we go first. I can tell you, in 2015, we went to J. Edgar Hoover Building and I was lucky enough to sit on a panel the first day. Then they wanted to hear about the Dearborn model and they adjusted the agenda. They put Dr. Maleko, the mayor, Iman Mardini, and others on the spot the second day. We gave about a four-hour presentation for a global group. We didn't have to convince them that it was the right thing to do to get into schools, take care of the children. So to fast forward, we've had many exercises for active shooters in the schools. I can tell you that your principals and your administrators are ready. Mr. Leacher talked about being rapid-ready on the street. I can tell you that without giving out too many family secrets, that every day, we have two rapid-ready teams on the street for every hour of the day. And every, every officer is, you know, poised and trained to, to go in, but we have two dedicated teams on the street. And with this technology, we just want to be able to get into the school quickly and make sure that we eradicate any threat that's taking lives in the schools. And I would appreciate the board approving our request tonight and our agreement because we've done everything physically that we can do to train our officers, to train the teachers, train the students, and this just puts us to a higher level. And I know that at times, people will feel nervous when you mention video. It's been a long time. About 10 years ago, there was a national study that we show up on 34 videos every day and we don't even know it. We're in the video age and it's not to be abused, it's not, you know, to spy on people, but we are in the video age. Other people have more video than law enforcement, than the school boards, et cetera. And we just want to make sure that in the event that something does occur in a school, and the schools are still among the number one soft targets on Homeland Security's list, by the way. So we want to just make sure that in the event something were to occur of a grave nature, that we can identify where it's at, get the right people in there, and put an end to it immediately before anyone or more people get hurt. And that's what we want to do. So, and we're here to do that. I don't want to go on too long. We've had a longstanding relationship with the schools and during COVID, recognizing that students weren't going to get the vaccines first, we made it a point to go to every household and leave at least 10 masks at the doors of every household in Dearborn because we realized that the students would be the most vulnerable. We also went by, when time allowed, and we didn't miss any that I know of, on students' birthdays and have a few police cars go by their homes, knowing that they're stressed out and locked in at the homes. And yeah, we had some 100-year-old students that we also visited too during, during birthdays. But again, we are committed to the safety of our schools, safety of our students, and we're gonna put students first at every turn, so thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'm gonna let Mr. Leacher come back here.
So in the spirit of keeping our schools safe, here's what we've done. We have AEDs, as has been mentioned by Dr. Maleko, and first aid kits in all of our schools. Mr. Hummel, Scott Hummel, just revamped and redid all of the AEDs and they are all completely up to date and they, it is an outstanding program that we have done with regards to that. We have at least one staff member trained in first aid at all of our schools. This is required as a part of the crisis response team. There's a crisis response team at every single one of our schools. I will tell you, when I first came on this job and I started meeting with school principals and going over their, their emergency operation plans and identifying those teams, I was very, very impressed with, with what we've done at, at the building level with regard to that. We have security cameras in our high schools and at other locations. Yearly state-required fire, tornado, and lockdown drills. Our Director of Student Services, Mr. Mashur, does a phenomenal job of making sure those get done every year. We have staff training and emergency procedures, tabletop exercises with school staff and emergency management teams from the city of Dearborn. Chief Haddad has talked about active shooter training and building with cooperation from the Dearborn Police and Fire Departments, actual, actual scenario drills that have been conducted. Again, prior to my arrival, something we will continue to do. Again, this is, this is outstanding work that we have done. The, the, the program that we use is the ALICE program. It is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. That's what the acronym stands for. This training includes a computer-based module, which we've introduced this, this past year. With COVID, it's kind of, you know, kind of, COVID kind of turned the world upside down. So we, we are looking forward to getting all of our, all of our students back, our teachers back, and implementing that training. What I heard and how I responded to that was, from the, from the staff, was you get into our buildings maybe once a year to talk to us and go over the stuff with the tabletop, but we want to, we want more, we want to know more, we want to be able to, to get more of this. And it's, it's difficult to get around to buildings more than, more than once in a year, maybe not even all the buildings once in a year. The important thing with this training is with this computer-based module is they can go back and, and re, re, re-educate themselves, reintroduce themselves to basic lockdown procedures and basic things that they can do in, in an event that would require us to employ the ALICE protocol. Just touch this. Thank you. So here's where we're headed. We're in the process of putting a new emergency notification system in. We started that project in December of 2020. It is moving right along. We have regular meetings on status with the, with the vendors. This, this emergency, it's a, it's a clock that, multiple clocks that are spaced out throughout the buildings that are able to scroll any message that we want, along with a audible message and a flashing signal to get the attention of everyone in the building. These are in hallways, these are in classrooms. It is a notification system that instead of tones that we need to memorize, it gives in plain terms, this is a lockdown, this is evacuation. It gives what we're supposed to do. It can also give district-wide alerts at the exact same time on a tornado, a warning that we need to, to take shelter on. This is a phenomenal system that Mr. Attie could speak more to as far as some of the technical aspects of it, but I know that, that this is, this is something that is, is not in, in all school. It is something that we are kind of on the pioneering edge of and side of, and I think that, again, this is a phenomenal tool in, in helping to keep our, keep our students safe. We have secure entry doors requiring electronic ID access. That program is a program that, that I supervise and oversee. If you are, do not have a badge like this, you are not, you do not get into buildings. The buildings are programmed, badges are programmed per building, per access. That access changes on a fairly regular basis. I am almost daily making updates to the access to make sure that only people that need to have access have access to what they need to be able to get into and have access to. We redesigned, a redesign of our building entrances and reception areas. Again, a lot of this was done in the 2013 bond program, but where more schools are planned. And again, administrators are excited about this, about the ability to be able to control where people go once they gain access into our buildings. And along with that, we are looking at additional security cameras with connectivity to police and fire personnel to provide situational awareness in emergency situations. This slide gives an overview of basically the IP and analog cameras that we have in service at this time. There are probably a couple of schools, no, I take that back, I apologize. All the schools that are listed here are where our IP cameras are and our analog cameras are. The difference between IP and analog cameras is an IP camera is something that is connected to the internet, is something you can grant multiple people that have access to. An analog camera is on a server that's located at the building. You do not have access except at the building level. They function the same way. The ability to view what's on those cameras is what is, is what is different here. I just wanted that up there more for reference than anything else. So the, the current cameras in the district are at our high schools and middle schools and they are in general areas, as, as listed on the slide, hallways, cafeterias, entrances, football fields, other central locations. They are not located in classrooms. We currently do not have cameras in our elementary schools. Safety and security, and safety and security was part, and again, you are all aware that safety and security was part of our last bond proposal and that has shown to be incredibly supported by our parents. So with regard to the real-time emergency video link system, we've been discussing this, this, the, the school district and the police department and the city relations, Board of City Relations Committee has been discussing this for years, long before I, I came on board here. There's a regard, it involves a video link of the camera feed of the Dearborn Police, which was only be used, would only be used in active emergency situations. During an emergency, first responders and authorized dispatch center personnel would have access to the camera feed. With this access to the camera feed, it can reduce the amount of time it takes to identify the location of the emergency. Most mass shootings are over in a matter of a few minutes. You heard me mention earlier, Columbine was 13. The average from research I've done is 10 to 15 minutes and the situation is completely over. Dearborn Police Department has an outstanding response time and knowing the location of an active shooter or any other life-threatening emergency upon or prior to arrival could save many, many lives. Different types of emergencies that they could respond to could include unruly fans, a fire, or a medical emergency. And again, this would be an adequate use of this link to be able to identify, pinpoint where the, where the emergency was taking place. And many school districts already have this district, excuse me, already have this technology in place. Some of those districts include Dearborn Heights, District 7, Allen Park, and many, many other school districts around the area.
And just to be clear, the, the police link is not, it's going to be for emergencies. So that's what we just want to put it out here. So if there's some rumors, we don't have them currently in classrooms or anything like that. We don't have any plans. This is the general areas where we would need to put them, you know, your hallways, your fields, the areas where you would want, you know, entrances, things of that nature. We don't plan to use them. The police, they wouldn't have time to be monitoring these things. Any of the cameras that we expand in the district really have nothing to do with the police. That's our decision as a school district as to why we want to do that. And we were, you know, planning for that with the bonds, so. I'm gonna let Mr. Courier, our district legal counsel, comment.
Good evening, Mayor Thor, or Board President Thorpe, Dr. Maleko, members of the board. Over a period of time, I have worked with my counterpart, Deborah Walling, who's the city attorney in Dearborn, have known for a number of years. We both were concerned that if this doesn't work out, what's the best way to deal with it? So the agreement doesn't, comes with a clause that allows either party to opt out if it's not working. Now, the agreement has been reviewed by both the city and district legal counsel. I understand that the city has approved it and we're asking, I also recommend it as the district's legal counsel that it be approved as well. I think there's a lot of safeguards, but to put it into this interlocal agreement, protect the privacy of the students. But also, it's important to protect their safety and this would improve the response time of the police department. I was not a police officer for 48 years, but I was one for five and a half. And I know how important that is. So it is my recommendation that it be approved.
And again, this is, you know, why are we here? It's about our students. So this is the, the system will, will help protect, you know, the community, the staff, the students, everyone in the district. And, you know, we're thankful we have such a great relationship with the Dearborn Police Department and we will continue to partner to make sure that we maintain safety for our students. Thank you.